I think we've got about 50 seconds and I just want to say that there's a, you know, the, the, um, the gauntlet has been thrown, right? It was 45 minutes is the, I'm just, you know.
It's gonna be hard to duplicate that.
Let's do it.
Very tough. I can talk fast, but I don't know about that fast with what we have on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna happen.
All right, seven o'clock, so I will call to order this meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission this Monday, November 22nd, 2021, and we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heather, can you take the role?
Speaker.
I'm in the city of Mount Pleasant, the county of Isabella, in the state of Michigan.
Commissioner Simon.
I'm in the city of Mount Pleasant, Isabella County, state of Michigan.
Commissioner Gillis.
Mount Pleasant, Isabella, Michigan.
Commissioner Ronan.
Very happy to be in the city of Mount Pleasant, the county of Isabella, and the great state of Michigan.
Commissioner Tolles.
City of Mount Pleasant, county of Isabella, state of Michigan.
Vice Mayor Fuschbacher.
I'm in the city of Mount Pleasant, the county of Isabella, in the state of Michigan.
And Mayor Joseph.
I'm in the city of Mount Pleasant, the county of Isabella, in the state of Michigan. All right, so we have, all of us are here tonight. First, on our proclamations and presentations is we have our proclamation recognizing the elimination of violence against Women's Day, November 25th, 2021. All right. Whereas, the crime of violence against women and girls continues to be the most pervasive human rights violation due to physical, emotional, verbal, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse that does not know any national nor cultural barriers and affects millions of women and girls of all races and socio-economic backgrounds in peacetime and conflict. And whereas, the crime of violence against women and girls violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity, which results in serious, short-term and long-term physical, sexual, and reproductive and mental health problems. And whereas, the World Health Organization estimates that one in three, or 35% of women worldwide have experienced violence. And whereas, according to UNICEF, around one in 10 girls under the age of 20 worldwide have experienced sexual assault and more than 650 million women alive today were married as children, with more than 12 million girls married before the ages of 18 each year. And whereas, according to the Global Report on Trafficking in Persons by the United Nations Office on Drugs and Crime, the most common form of human trafficking, or 79%, is sexual exploitation. And whereas, Zonta International, a global organization with more than 28,000 members in 62 countries, is working to make gender equality a worldwide reality for women and girls and has contributed to help achieve a world free of violence against women and girls for more than 100 years. Whereas, the United Nations has established November 25th, 2021, as the International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women. And whereas, the Zonta Club of Mount Pleasant, along with all Zonta Clubs, is encouraging all residents to prevent gender-based violence by saying no to violence against women. Now therefore, I, William L. Joseph, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, on behalf of the City Commission and the citizens of Mount Pleasant, do hereby recognize and proclaim, November 25th, 2021, as Elimination of Violence Against Women Day. In Mount Pleasant, and further, support all efforts to end violence against women and girls in our community, and witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand in the great seal of the City of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, this 22nd day of November, 2021. Erin, did we have anyone from Zonta with us tonight? Oh, it's like Ruth is with us. Yep, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
That's okay. And I am here representing Zonta. My name is Ruth Helwig. I am currently the Secretary of the Zonta Club of Mount Pleasant. And the Zonta Club of Mount Pleasant thanks the Mount Pleasant City Commission for recognizing, along with Santa, November 25th, 2021, as the United Nations International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women. Zonta International has dedicated over 100 years, most of which has been in conjunction with the United Nations to improving the lives of women and girls by empowering women worldwide through service and advocacy. Zonta envisions a world in which women's rights are recognized as human rights and every woman is able to achieve her full potential. And a critical piece of this mission is working to end both human trafficking and sexual assault. So again, the Zonta Club of Mount Pleasant would like to thank the City Commissioners for recognizing these efforts and for the support of the elimination of violence against women. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ruth, and thank you for Zonta. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have an update from Jim McBride of Middle Michigan Development Corporation.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first of all, I would like to apologize for last, last meeting. We had just put in outlooks 365 and I will have to say I've never missed a meeting like that and I really apologize for that, but it is somehow not, it wasn't on my calendar. Or it had been on and I don't know what happened, but anyway, I apologize for that and glad to be with you here tonight. So I know we're going over what we had intended to at the last meeting and I wanted to just mention our quarter three report, which you should have. In that first column, keep in mind that the overall totals are for the first three quarters and it's cumulative. And this represents company visits in all of Isabella and Clare Counties, of which Mount Pleasant had a total of 80 or 44% of the total. Job hires at the end of the third quarter, 335 or 65% of the total. Net new investments, and that's not high, and I'll mention in a moment what we are actually doing there. That's 158, 639 was reported by the companies we called on are 1% of the total. Company assists 188 or 52% of the total. Now, on the investments, what we typically do is we start calling the companies about now through the balance of November and into December to get updated numbers. Because these are going to be investment numbers for the entire year. And then we also confirm the number of people that are hired so that we have accurate numbers when we report those. At the end of the year, we have not yet done that. So that's why this investment number is artificially low. I expect that to go way up as we get those investment numbers, we call back the companies. Because keep in mind, some of these calls we made were back in January, February, March, you know, and they don't show us what, what the annual amount would be. But, but the company visits and hires and assists, that's accurate up through the third quarter. Under grants, as you might remember, we had the Michigan Small Business Survival Grant Program that ran in January, and that was where we were covering six counties for the state of Michigan. We distributed about $1.8 million in six counties. So not just our two of Isabella and Clare, but we also had Midland, Grasset, Gladwin, and Aranat Counties. The total amount for businesses just within the city limits of Mount Pleasant was $30,000 in grant assistance and, and many of those companies were very appreciative. Well, they were all appreciative, but you know, many of them told us that that money was critical at that particular time. Then we followed up with Match on Main and our Spring Match on Main Program. The state had 20 Match on Main Grants available for the whole state and we were able to snag two of them here. They were all $25,000 grants or maxed at 25,000. So Pleasant City Coffee received a $25,000 grant for the development of a wine tasting bar and overall renovations in their coffee house. And Mountain Town Station received a $25,000 grant for outdoor dining enhancements and increased seating capacity. So those, those funds have been received, those changes have been made. I know it says here, this is an older document here, funds have been requested or expected to be dispersed. They've already been dispersed and, and those changes have been made at Mountain Town, so. And I will mention that, it's not on here, but this will be in the fourth quarter report, that we had 18 applicants from the city of Mount Pleasant for the Fall Match on Main Program. And then we submitted two to the state and we, you know, the two best that we thought, based on the scoring, and we're optimistic that we're once again going to get a good response from the state for those applications and I'll know more soon and we'll be able to report that at our, at our next report. I want to go on to our strategic plan if I might, and that's your next page. We had a three-year strategic plan that is expiring here at the end of the year in 2021. So our team and our executive committee worked on this and this is a, an updated version and I'll just go over this real quick. Mission, we grow the economy with services designed to retain, expand and attract businesses in Clare and Isabella Counties to foster economic vitality and resilience within our region. Our vision that we are the primary economic development driver for businesses, communities, and industrial partners in middle Michigan. Once again, like, like before, we really focus in three areas, business retention and growth, business attraction, community development. I'll let you kind of read that, but you know, there's a couple of new additions. There's a little more of a focus on talent attraction and support because that is what we're hearing from our businesses, that that is such a critical factor right now. And to maintain and recruit a strong talent base, so, so that's a new emphasis. Under business attraction, support efforts to foster entrepreneurial growth because that is an increasing area of focus for us. Under community development, you know, we've had that on here before, but really a stronger emphasis than ever before for supporting place-based businesses through programs and initiatives to strengthen recreational, artistic, and cultural vibrancy. So those are the new things that have been added that, you know, were really not reflected so much in, in the prior version. And the strategic plan has been accepted by our entire board. It was voted in at our last meeting. So that is now in place going in for the next three years. So that's what we're going to be focused on, all of those areas. So that concludes my report and happy to take any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, sorry. Thank you, Jim, for being with us and I actually had a couple of questions for you. The first one, for the Match on Main Grants, those are pretty heavily helped with our redevelopment ready certification. Is that right?
Absolutely. In fact, it's what qualifies you. In other words, you either have to be a redevelopment-ready community or a Main Street community to apply for those. So if you're not, the Main Street program's an older program. So that was kind of grandfathered in. Redevelopment ready is a newer and more comprehensive program and that's the one you guys were certified in and that, that's the one, if you have to choose one of the two, that's the one you want to be certified in. So it opens the door for you to be able or eligible for this Match on Main program money and you wouldn't be if you weren't an RRC community, so. So yes.
Yes, thank you. And then I was wondering if you could explain a little bit more about what is a place-based business?
Yeah, so a place-based business, this is the whole idea that millennials, Gen Z, younger people are thinking about jobs and locations differently than my generation did. You know, my generation tended to go where the job was. You know, I can get a job, I'm going to move here for the job. Young people, and I can say, I've got four daughters in this category. All four of them decided where they wanted to live and then went to go find a job where that was. So that's, that's just a very different mindset and it's typical of that generation. So we're finding out that to attract the kind of talent that companies are looking for, there needs to be a sense of place, there needs to be amenities and cool restaurants and things to do that young people really want to be a part of. You know, it, it was a major part of, of the whole issue of, you know, dealing with the missing middle, with the Broadway Lofts, you know, to have some residential housing that's a little different. It's not your typical cookie cutter student apartments and, you know, not a duplex or not something like that, but a high-grade mixed-use building with a cool new grocery store on the first floor. That's, that's a place-based project. That's a project that really attracts that younger generation and enriches the sense of downtown. So the more we can enhance the sense of downtown, enhance, that's really what these Match on Main's grants are all about. Too, you know, opening a wine bar at Pleasant City. You know, the, the idea there is, you know, amenities and cool things to make Mount Pleasant an attractive place to live. And then young people tend to, you know, tend to want to live there and it's easier for them than to connect with the job at that location. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Jim?
Can I say one more thing?
Of course, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, you've done an excellent job. I understand we're losing you to Popeye's it, I believe. And, you know, our loss, their gain, and I've really enjoyed working with you. You've done a fantastic job and I just want to say that.
Thank you, Jim. It's been a pleasure to work in Mount Pleasant and to be the mayor. And I have always appreciated the work you've done for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we have one more presentation tonight. And that is with Dee Obrich, who is the Executive Director of Isabella County Restoration House. Hi Dee.
Hello. Thanks for letting me come and present to you. It's been a very interesting season starting out. Normally, when I look back to the last couple of years, it's about the middle to end of November before we hit our capacity. And our capacity starts out low because we have some of our smaller churches knowing that it takes a while for us to get up to our usual capacity. During the heavy winter months, January, February, March, we can host as many as up to 36 usually. We try to keep those numbers down with COVID, social distancing and everything. But this year, we hit our capacity on the second day. And when we opened, I was already getting calls from social workers in other counties asking if we could take other people in because their county's homeless shelter was full. As an example, I got a call from social workers in Saginaw asking if they could send people to us because their 100-bed homeless shelter was at capacity the beginning of November. And so I right away sent a, you know, put a post on our Facebook and, and was telling social workers who would call, let them know that our priority is Isabella County and we also serve Grasset and Clare County. So our capacity needs to be mostly people from Isabella County, from this region. And we hit our capacity on the second day. And we have been running at capacity since then. Again, our capacity is lower the first two months because we have our smaller churches then. We're rotating and visit, we are hosted by churches in the community. And so we tend to have our smaller churches at the beginning because we usually take a while to get up to capacity, but we are running at capacity right now. And this last week, we probably turned away about 20 people. And again, not all of them from our county, but I do know that the local or within mid-Michigan, all the homeless shelters are running at capacity right now. So it's an unusual year. We think some of it is due to the additional unemployment is no longer available for people. And so instantly, they lost $300 a month. Plus, the, a lot of the moratoriums on eviction have ended and people wait till the last minute to apply for the assistance with eviction and then they don't qualify or their landlord isn't wanting to participate. And so we have a lot of people in need right now. And so that's been probably the biggest change. The statistics that I can find indicate that there's about 510 homeless individuals living in Isabella County on a regular basis. Of course, it's hard to get that count. We do the PIT count in January, the point-in-time count. And due to COVID for the last year, we have not been able to do the extensive count where we're actually going out and looking for homeless people. And so there's about 510 homeless accounted for in Isabella County. And right now, my capacity is at 20 because we are, you know, doing our lower volume churches at the beginning. After New Year's, I will be able to go up to 30 to 35. But right now, I need to hold it down a little bit lower. And so we've been running at full capacity and I kind of use it as leverage with my guests. You better behave because I can give your spot away. But, you know, right now, we, we have already housed three people, found them housing either with a friend or family or an apartment. And so in, in the less than a month, we have already turned around three people finding housing and helping with assistance. And most everybody works very closely with AICAP for the Housing Voucher or Rapid Re-Housing Programs and apply to get their name on that waitlist as well. And there are a lot more vouchers being chosen. In previous years, we might have one or two names drawn by the state of Michigan. But within the last year, they've had a lot more drawn than that. And with all the CARES Act, there's been an emphasis on homelessness. And so they're, they are able to draw those names a lot more. I know last year, about half of our guests, about 14 of them had their name drawn and they were able to get a housing voucher to help them get into housing. And so that's kind of, it's not a pleasant picture that I can paint for you. But generally, we provide housing for, in the past, it's been up to about 150. Last year, due to COVID, it was about 100 individuals that we served. We did, we provided last year 169 nights of shelter. And out of the 24 weeks that we were open, nine of those were spent at the day shelter. We got a special use permit from the City of Mount Pleasant. Thank you very much for that. Because if you remember, this time last year, there was an emergency order and all the churches shut down. And so we housed our people directly at the day shelter. And, you know, again, that makes our capacity smaller. We can't hold as many people in the day shelter overnight. But the biggest change over the last two years for us is the need to be open 24/7. And so we are staffing 24/7 and we're seeking volunteers 24/7. Because a lot of the services that were there for homeless individuals are either not available or they have been changed. As an example, the soup kitchen is not open. They're distributing meals and they've done a wonderful job at it. And we get meals from them on a regular basis, but they aren't open. So homeless people can't go there for their meal. And they don't have any place to go and get out of the cold. So our board has made the decision to be available to them. So our guests leave the churches now in the morning and come directly to the day shelter. And with the COVID numbers being what they are in our community, I'm not letting them do much more than stay at the day shelter. They're not happy with it, but they understand and they're working with me on that. But that's made a big change for us. Last year, we served 15,000 meals. Whereas prior to that, we only served evening suppers. And so that has been a huge increase for us. Plus, the sanitary supplies needing to keep things sanitized and, you know, having the gloves, having the equipment, the snacks available, the drinks available for everybody. That, all of that has increased and our board watches very closely because our budget has just about doubled. But we have been able to obtain some of the HUD funding through the Emergency Services Grant and Emergency Services Program. And so that is helping us be able to be open 24/7.
Well, thank you, Dee. Certainly a large undertaking this year and last with the, with the demand for need in our community. And I was just wondering if people are interested in helping out in some way with ICRH, how can they do that?
The first step would be to go to our website, icrhouse.org and click on the "Your Help" banner or button. And then in the dropdown is volunteer. Click on that. There's a form to fill out. We're required to do a background check on everybody. And then once that's done, Cindy Hoyle, our volunteer manager, will get in touch with them and send them the link to be able to sign up to volunteer.
Well, thank you very much. Are there any other questions for Dee? Commissioner Alziger?
I just have a question and Dee, thank you so much for your presentation and all your good information. I did hear that since I was involved the first two weeks, you know, smaller churches, that, I don't know if it's one week or two where you don't have a church and they'll be housed at the day shelter. Is that true?
Yes, I do have four weeks beginning next week where our guests will be housed at the day shelter. I did have one church offer to let us use their facility. They won't be hosting, but we can stay at the facility and so I need to make those arrangements with them.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Dee, for taking part of your day to be here with us and we appreciate all your work on behalf of the community.
Well, thank you and we appreciate the community's support for us and how the city has stepped in and given us the permission to be able to continue meeting the needs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our final presentation tonight is introduction of recent city employees hired. Our final presentation tonight is introduction of recent city employees hired.
Mike Kerbal became our system administrator on November 8th. He comes to us from Isabella Bank, where he performed multiple IT-related responsibilities. Mike received his bachelor's degree in business administration with a major in management information systems from Central Michigan University. Welcome, Mike.
Well, we thank Mike for his service to the city. And I'm sure he'll be, sure to be very busy in this tech world that we're in. And that concludes our proclamations and presentations for the evening. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? All right. I don't see any hands up. And so at this time, I will open up public input on agenda items. And at this time, the public may either, at the bottom of your screen, hit the raise hand button. Or if you're with us by telephone, you can hit star nine. And we ask that you state your name and address for the record. It looks like we have Maureen Eke here with us.
Good evening. I am Maureen Eke. I live at 912 Hopkins in Mount Pleasant, Michigan, Isabella County. I want to thank the commission this evening for the proclamation recognizing November 25th as UND for the elimination of violence against women. And I want to thank especially the Xanta Club for bringing this forward. It is a very important issue that is often not given the attention that it needs. And COVID-19 has worsened, you know, the situation globally. We need to pay attention to what is happening to women. Of course, it's not just women who experience violence. Men also experience violence. But the majority of cases of gender-based violence, you know, is, has to do with women and young girls. One of three women reports that in their lifetime, they have experienced intimate partner violence. And we're talking about situations where 30% of women have reported that throughout their lifetime, they have experienced violence. So this is important for us. So I am so, so proud of the commission. I'm proud of this city for recognizing that. It is important. We need to keep it on the forefront of our conversations. Especially as we talk about homelessness. Somebody just talked about homelessness. Women are also affected by all sorts of situations, not just simply gender-based violence at home, but also natural disasters. Women and young girls, women and young people suffer. So it is important that we do this work. And so again, thank you so very much for paying attention to it. I am proud of you and I'm proud of the city of Mount Pleasant. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Erin, did we have any email comments to the commission?
No, we did not.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Well, it looks like we don't have any hands up anymore. And so I will close the public input on agenda items at this time. And then we'll move on to our receipt of petitions and communications. And I'll hand this over to our city manager, Erin DeSens.
Thank you, Mayor. Proceed of petitions and communications this evening. You have been provided with the city manager report on pending items, the minutes of the Economic Development Corporation Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, August minutes, minutes of the Downtown Development Authority, October meeting, minutes of the Planning Commission, October meeting, minutes of the Airport Joint Operations and Management Board, September meeting. Also, notice of temporary traffic control order number 2-2022. This places parking signs for snow emergencies at city limit entry road locations on city major streets, state roads, and county roads. Signs will advise people there is no parking during snow emergencies. Also, notice of temporary traffic control order number 3-2022. Changes parking in lots 7 and 8 to become 10-hour permit parking spaces. Removes existing parking signs and replaces them with new 10-hour permit parking signs at the parking lot entrance.
All right. Thank you, Erin. And then next on our agenda is the consent calendar. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent calendar this evening? All right. I don't see any hands. And so I'll have Erin give us just an overview of what those consent calendar items are.
Thank you, Mayor. There are just two items on the consented calendar for this evening. That is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the city commission held November 8th, 2021, and approval of payrolls and warrants.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yeah, I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
And Commissioner Tolles?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? Don't see any hands. And so I think we can go to a roll call vote on approving the consent calendar as presented.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frischbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Well, that brings us to item number 13. And we have a bid for our makeup air unit. And Erin, would you like to give us a brief overview on that?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mayor. So the city's water resource recovery facility requires a new ventilation and heat supply at the secondary pump station building. This unit removes moisture and fumes and odors that occur during the wastewater treatment process. It also provides the primary heat for this building as well, too. The city received four bids. Gateway Refrigeration was the lowest bid at $46,597. References for the company came back positive. Tonight, we are asking the city commission to award the bid for Gateway Refrigeration in an amount not to exceed $46,597.
Thank you, Erin. Commissioner Alsager?
I can make that motion. I move that the city commission awards the 2021 makeup air unit and installation bid to Gateway Refrigeration for no more than $46,597.
And Commissioner Tolles?
Support.
All right. We have a motion in a second for the recommended bid. Any discussion? All right. I think we go to a roll call vote on the motion to approve the bid for the makeup air unit.
All right. Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frischbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That brings us to item number 14, which is to consider a resolution on the 2022 operating budget. And we did have a work session at our last meeting. But Erin, would you like to give us just a brief overview of budget?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. So as you had mentioned, after conducting our work session, our presentation, and our public hearing, the city's proposed 2022 budget is ready for formal adoption by the city commission. Staff is recommending a motion to adopt the proposed budget resolution and to adapt the millage rate for 2022, which will be the same as in previous years. That sets the city's total millage rate at 16.25.
Commissioner Alsager?
I move that we adopt the 2022 operating budget and that we set the millage rate for 2022 as presented.
Vice Mayor Frischbacher?
I will support that.
We have a motion in a second to approve the resolution for the 2022 budget and the millage rate. Any discussion? Well, I would, I would like to just thank staff for putting together another great budget. Our budget document exceeds, I think, the standards put forth by many municipalities around the country. We, our document explains where our funds come from and the purpose of our funds. It really makes it an easy read for us, the commissioners, obviously, and also our residents who want to understand better how their city government is working. And so I just want to say hats off to Mary Ann Kornexel, Chris Aladine, and the rest of the staff who really put that together and have been consistently putting that together for decades. And so thank you very much. And again, we, I think we have a budget that presents more revenue than expenditures this year. And so that's also great news. But I know that there will be some, there might shake up a little bit in the year, time to come with some of the question marks on some of the revenues and how much money we're going to be spending on our bonds for the water resource recovery or resource facility. But that remains to be determined. And so I would just like to thank staff for their work. I don't see any other hands up. And so I think we can go to a roll call vote on approving the resolution for the 2022 budget and the millage rate.
All right. Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frischbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. That brings us to item number 15, which is to consider the resolution supporting amended rates, fees, and charges. And I'll hand this over to Erin for a brief overview.
Thank you, Mayor. So the attached resolution will establish the necessary fees and charges to support the various activities in the 2022 operating budget. This includes all parks and recreation fees, all of our utility fees, as well as any kind of late fees for various services built. Staff is recommending a motion to approve the attached resolution setting the fees for 2022.
Thank you, Erin. Commissioner Tolles?
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution under exhibit A, B, C, D, and E.
And Commissioner Simon?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the fee schedules. Any discussion? Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't know a whole lot about this stuff, to be honest. But I assume there's some comparison to other cities or something when we talk about, you know, some of the costs, the third-grade volleyball. I mean, I just don't know what the, I'm just so, I guess we're not pricing people out or something, right? I mean, it's a reasonable, do we have any knowledge about that?
Oh, thank you for the question, Commissioner Ronan. Yes. I can tell you that two things go into looking at our rates and fees structure. One is to ensure that the activities are supported, they're self-supported essentially, and that they're sustainable into the future. But two, we also look at a comparative method as well, too. And we compare our rates and fees to other nearby organizations or like-sized cities.
Thank you.
Don't see any other hands up. And so at this time, I think we can take a roll call vote on the motion to approve the fee schedule as presented.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frischbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. And then item number 16 is to consider appointments to the various boards and commissions as recommended by the appointments committee. Commissioner Alsager is the chairman of the appointments committee, and so I'll hand it over to her.
Thank you. Yes, we had a meeting and we do plan on having one more meeting this year to deal with new appointments. But the meeting that we just had, what we were doing was reappointments. And for any appointment that would expire at the end of 2021, those people were contacted to see if they were interested in continuing for a new term. And I think we got a real good response on that. So that's why we're suggesting that you support the reappointment of those people.
I have the list of the reappointments, if you'd like me to read them now. Okay, so for the 911 Central Dispatch Governing Board, Karen Breedlove is being reappointed to the board. She will serve from January 1st, 22 to December 31st of 24. Building Fire and Sanitary Sewer Board, Joe Fleming and Larry Summer. They will be reappointed on January 1st, 22 and will serve till December 31st, 24. The Chippewa River District Library Board, Katie Mora, will be appointed January 1st, 22 and will serve till December 31st of 25. City CMU Student Liaison Committee, Rachel Agardy?
Agardy.
Agardy? Agardarty? Agardy?
Agardy.
Agardy, okay.
Yeah.
January 1st of 22 to December 31st of 24. The Downtown Development Authority, we have Robbie Roberts and Robert Van Doran, January 1st of 22, will serve till December 31st of 25. Fire and Police Retirement Board, Bradley War, will serve from January 1st, 22 to December 31st of 25. The Historic District Commission, Mark, or Gary Mark and Julie Taylor, January 1st of 22 to December 31st of 24. Isabella County Transportation Commission, Rick Fokler, January 1st of 22 to December 31st of 24. Local Officers Compensation Commission, Andrew Devaney, January 1st of 22 to December 31st of 24. Parks and Recs Recreation Commission, Brian Mitchell, January 1st of 22 to December 31st of 24. Planning Commission, Leslie Honing, January 1st of 22 to December 31st of 24. The Principal Shopping District, Rachel Agardy. January 1st, 22 to December 31st, 25. Zoning Board of Appeals, Laura Rassason, January 1st of 22 to December 31st of 24.
I'll move that we accept the reappointments of the roster presented and Commissioner Ronan?
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second for the reappointment of the roster presented. Any discussion? All right. I think we can go into a roll call vote on the motion to reappointment.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frischbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. I would just add- Okay. I would just ask that the appointments committee get that roster to probably Eddie Pritchard and the staff. Heather as well for the minutes.
I just have a quick question. With some of the appointments, we have a commissioner-elect that is on. Oh, have I stopped?
No, we can hear you.
Okay, I have a commissioner, commission-elect that.
We can't see you now, Lori, but we can hear you.
Well, sorry, guys.
There you go, bigger back.
All right. I'm not sure exactly what my computer's doing, but and we had policy that if you're elected to the commission, you would resign your committee appointment and then, okay, just as long as the appointments committee is aware of that.
Okay. That brings us to item number seventeen, which is to accept my resignation from the City Commission. I, I've accepted a job in Paw Paw, Michigan as the village manager. And so I will be resigning from the City Commission effective this Friday, November twenty-sixth. Commissioner Tolles.
I will make a motion to accept Mayor Will Joseph's letter of resignation from the City Commission.
Commissioner Alsager.
It is with great sadness that I second that motion.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, well, with no hands up, we can go into a roll call vote to accept my resignation effective November twenty-sixth.
Commissioner Tolles.
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan.
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis.
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager.
Yes.
Commissioner Simon.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ferschbacher.
Yes.
Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Well, I thank the commission for letting me go. That brings us to announcements on city-related issues and new business. And I guess I would just like to, I'd like to thank the community for the time that I've been able to serve as mayor and as city commissioner. It's been an honor and a pleasure to do this job. And it brings a perspective that, you know, you get to see all the forces at work that really create the city, the community, and really the basis for society all over. And that's a perspective that I've been fortunate enough to have in this role. And I think I'll probably carry that perspective into my new role. There's countless people here at City Hall, in the community, my family, my girlfriend, that I have to thank for their support over the years. And it's been an honor and it's been incredible. So just thank you. That's really all I have to say. On that note, I'd like to remind the community that the COVID numbers in mid-Michigan and in Michigan in general are spiking at really an all-time high. And that our health systems are at a critical level in terms of people in hospital beds. And so I really do want to remind people that, you know, practicing social distancing, wearing your masks, getting vaccinated, or getting your booster shots is really more important today than it ever has been. I saw in the news today that more people died in two thousand twenty-one from COVID-nineteen than they did in two thousand twenty. And so we are definitely not out of the fight yet to defeat this virus. And so do all that you can, especially during these holiday months, to make sure that you, your loved ones, your neighbors, and your friends, that we all get through this together. And then Vice Mayor Ferschbacher.
Yeah, we have a plaque that the commission is giving you, Will. Aaron is holding it up right there. It's the mayor plaque. Okay, and I'd like to just say a few words. It has been quite the experience getting to know you, Will. We have all watched as you have become the person you are today, and we acknowledge your devotion to the city and to the staff. So the years, past few years, we've been watching your leadership style evolve. And we look forward to hearing about your experiences as you start your new career as a village manager. We give you this plaque as a way to remember your time that you spent with us. Good luck, Will.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Gillis.
Yes. Thank you. I also want to thank our, our community members, my friends and my family for their support to serve as a city commissioner for the last six years and one year as vice mayor. It was also an honor to serve on our planning commission for three years. And I have tried over the years to serve all of our community members. And I am grateful to have been given a chance to make some lasting improvements. A few that I'd like to mention, in my first month as a commissioner, I opened access to the north side of the eighty-acre Indian Pines Park. And I initiated policing of the park by the DNR and local police to eliminate illegal hunting and illegal blinds, logging of trees, and other illegal activities occurring on our public park property. Since then, we have safeguarded the park with officer patrol and signage and will develop a master plan for Indian Pines Park next year. And so I would like to invite all community members to visit this serene and pristine park north of our local airport. It is a local treasure. During that time, my car was vandalized in the parking lot during a commission meeting. Unfortunate for me, but it led me to pursue the purchase of security cameras on our fifteen-million-dollar Borden building. Our insurance kicked in half of that cost, and with the help of Chris Saladine and his IT crew, we made that happen. Thank you, staff. And while attending an MML conference, I learned of a new way to fund sidewalks with Act fifty-one money. And this is how we fund our new sidewalks today. I have also found, I also found a way to save seven thousand nine hundred dollars from the Tifa for the North Industrial Park because of duplication of services. We had a staff member and also Mr. McBride doing the same thing and charging us this money. And so we were able to have our staff handle that development. And we saved that money every year. It's not a lot of money, but every dollar counts. And that's how I looked through the budget in the past six years. I also questioned the policy of one to three percent interest being charged to the city on brownfield reimbursements to developers. Our new policy does not include this interest paid to developers unless a transformational development occurs and can only be approved by a two-thirds supermajority of the City Commission. This single policy change has saved thousands of dollars for taxpayers. With the help of the former mayor, Jim Holton, we together worked to establish the free brush pickup program that happens twice a year. And this free service has helped thousands of residents over the past five years and helped to reduce our local blight. And I am thankful to all who have made this a success. While serving on our city CMU Liaison Committee, we were discussing the self-defense courses for our CMU students taught by our local officers. I had the idea of having the course expanded and available to our local community as well. And with the help of our local officers, this has happened for several years. And then I had the privilege to work on our new zoning ordinance, our new master plan, and our new marijuana ordinances, along with serving on the Marijuana Ad Hoc Committee for a summer. Those were a lot of work. I valued the community input and your time and effort. And thank you, residents, for being a part of our decisions. One of the last items that I have pushed for for several years on the commission is a downtown ice skating rink. Several staff have had this idea also, but we finally will have an outdoor rink this winter. So please venture out this winter and enjoy this new opportunity with your family. I hope my service as your city commissioner will have made improvements to you and your life and our city as a whole. So I want to thank you for allowing me to serve my community. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Commissioner Tolles.
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to make a couple of comments here as my time winds down here on the City Commission. I had three years on the City Commissioner, eight years on the zoning board, of four of which I chaired the zoning board. And I was an advocate of the regional center. I can't believe it's been over ten years now. But I brought it to the city's attention that we had a a deal that we had on a quick claim deed that was deed restricted and came up through the nineteen thirty-four Comstock Act that nobody basically paid attention to. We have seven million dollars into it and still haven't got it resolved, but I hope we're at the point now where this commission moves forward with a, some type of congressional act here to get this straightened out. So we can get this property developed and get it sold and get seven million of the taxpayers' dollars back. The second quick thing I want to make a comment on is the Marijuana Recreational Ordinance, which one of the new city commissioners now had a big question on, how did this come about and how do we limit to three? Well, to answer that commissioner's question, we had a vote on it. We had a lengthy discussion on it. And there was only me and Commissioner Gillis that voted no to limit this to three because we're going to have some lawsuits that would resolve out of this, which now we have three or four pending lawsuits that are still in place now that are going to have to be resolved by the next commission that comes on. Another thing the commission's going to have to deal with is the old city landfill, which, under my opinion, it's grandfathered in. It was capped and approved and finished off almost sixty years ago. And I predict to this city that we're going to wind in the same predicament that the city of Ithaca did right now, which they have a multimillion-dollar cleanup on their old landfill because they just didn't pay attention. You had something that had no regulations, Harley, where acid batteries were dumped there, scrap metal was dumped there, Dowell dumped there, Slumber Jay dumped there, everybody dumped there. Now, all of a sudden, we want to do core borings to see what's putting in this dump, how thick the clay cap is. And this is just ridiculous. It was all grandfathered in, but now we're at an expensive, in excess of a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars because this board voted to move forward to it. I just want to thank the people that supported me and put confidence in me to put me in here. I tried my best, and I hope I didn't disappoint you. But honestly, I tried my best, but it was a battle. It was a battle. And when people say, well, you know, some people are Republican, Democrat, you just can't get along. I'm a Republican. Commissioner Gillis is a Democrat, and I got perfectly along with her. And I have to congratulate the Democrat Party because you did a great job. Because this commission's going to be so lopsided down when a new commission comes into place. I don't think you're going to get anything done. And I'm going to come back and I'm going to check on these points, and I hope some gets resolved and doesn't cost taxpayers a fortune. So thank you.
Well, I hope, I hope Commissioner Gillis and Commissioner Tolles will be at the next meeting. Guess have one more meeting at least. Any other announcements or new business for the commission? All right. Well, that brings us to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. And if you're with us by phone, you can hit star nine. And if you're with us by Zoom, you can go to the bottom of your screen and hit the raise hand button. We say you state your name and your address for the record. All right, we have Maureen Eke.
Maureen N. Eke. Nine, I'm sorry, I'm coming back, Nineteenth Hopkins Street, Mount Pleasant, Michigan, Isabella County. I have a question. Scheduled today, the last leaf pickup was scheduled for today. But if anyone is paying attention, thanks to climate change and global warming, the trees have refused to release their leaves all around us. So I am hoping that the city would schedule at least one more pickup for, you know, the community, because there are a lot of people with trees whose leaves have not fallen. And if we don't do anything about those, when they fall, they'll end up in the streets. And you have people like me running out there during the winter when it starts draining to go clean up the covers of the main drain. So I don't know what the plan is, but I do hope that you consider that. At least one more leaf pickup. It doesn't have to be next week. Just give it a few more weeks. Hopefully, the leaves will all fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Well, I don't see any other hands up in the attendees section. Aaron, did we have any emailed comments to the commission? Or Mary Ann?
No, we did not.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Commissioner Ronan, you have your hand up?
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to do a shout out to, and I don't know if this is probably inappropriate, you can just mute me, but I wanted to do a shout out to the, to the city crew. You know, we had a horrible season in terms of trees falling, and it was so windy and so much rain and stuff. And it's just incredible. I don't know who the exact people are, and I probably should have before I said that, but it's just been incredibly impressive to watch them go around and take care of those trees. And, you know, they, they get rid of the stumps, they, they put topsoil in there. One of my neighbors is a master gardener, and they did, they just did a wonderful job. And it's something that the, the city residents sort of pay attention to, right? I mean, it's I think city residents just expect great drinking water. They expect a great sewer system. They expect, you know, obviously, they just expect daily. But to see people out there and taking care of that, I just think it, it builds some pride in the city. And so kudos to the team that does all that.
I think that's really well noted, George. I've seen them out myself, and I think that's the perspective I was talking about. It's just all takes, takes everybody putting their hand in. All right, well, that brings us to the end of our meeting. I'd like to thank the commission for a pretty quick meeting. An hour and seven minutes is pretty quick for us, as anybody knows. And it's been a pleasure to serve as your mayor and with all of you. And I'll be watching from afar. So thank you and have a good night.
Good luck, Will.
Thank you.